Thank you.
Just good evening. We're back.
I gotta collect myself. I rushed over here tonight, so. Alright, so we will get this meeting started tonight. Anyone who does wish to address council, if you would please sign in on the sign-in sheet over here at the table with your name and address. And we will get started here in just a second.
Mouse Lefty? Mouse Lefty? I need to get you. Do you have a mouse pad? Do you want a mouse pad? I don't have one with me, but I can bring you one next time. Do you want one?
Okay, so we'll start as we always do with our prayer for NCH City Council, then the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
God our Father, we are all your servants. We trust in your mercy and love. We trust also in your guidance. Direct the meetings of this council of North College Hill to make good decisions for all the people who live in our city. Give all the members of this council wisdom and insight to know what is best for our city. Help us to be fair and just in all our decisions. Bless us all to do the very best we can with your help and guidance. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. It is Monday, April 17th. This is a regular North College Hill City Council meeting, and we will turn to roll call. Mr. Hedger, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Duxteen?
Present.
Ms. DeWolff?
Here.
Ms. Underwood?
Present.
Ms. Alexander?
Present.
Ms. Zorb?
Here.
Ms. Blythe?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Hedger. You have tonight's agenda.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWolff?
I make a motion to accept the agenda.
Mr. President, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Zorb. We have a motion from Ms. DeWolff, second from Ms. Zorb, to accept tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Mr. Hedger, please call the roll.
Ms. Duxteen?
Yes.
Ms. DeWolff?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb?
Yes.
Ms. Blythe?
Yes.
Motion passed, six oh.
Thank you. We also have the minutes from the council meeting that occurred on April the 3rd.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWolff?
The only thing I could find on a quick read was in the very beginning, Ms. Anderson is not present.
I will make that correction.
Thank you. Other than that, I make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Mr. President.
Ms. Duxteen?
I'll second that motion.
Motion for Ms. DeWolff, second by Ms. Duxteen, to adopt the minutes from the 4-3 meeting. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Zorb?
So I'm confused at the comment Ms. DeWolff made. Are you saying that Ms. Anderson was not at the last meeting?
Oh, my gosh. That's what I get for rushing in here. I retract that statement. That was her last meeting.
It was her last meeting.
Sorry. Thank you.
You had it accurate.
Any other discussion? Alright, motion on the floor to adopt the 4-3 minutes from Ms. DeWolff, second by Ms. Duxteen. Please call the roll.
Ms. Duxteen?
Yes.
Ms. DeWolff?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb?
Yes.
Ms. Blythe?
Yes.
Motion passed, six oh.
Thank you. Do you have any communication tonight, sir?
Thank you, Ms. President. I do not.
Alright, that'll take us to council committees, starting with City Community Development and Recreation.
Okay, City Community Development and Recreation met on April 10th at 6:30. The first thing that was brought up was the renters' registration legislation. We had not received any type of update from Mr. Dieters, and I will email him regarding that. Ms. Clear wasn't there, but we did review the report that was sent, and we talked about some upcoming events, food truck days, Memorial Day Parade, the Juneteenth Music Festival on June 17th. We also talked about Wise Park was still flooding, and asked Ms. Eke to follow up with the vendor who performed the work. I believe we did receive some correspondence back saying that something had been done to remedy that, to make the drainage go. It would still kinda not flood, but accumulate a little bit, but there was some accommodations made for the drainage. We also had a senior center update in which we said that renovations still need to be made, brought up to code, fire extinguishers and things of that nature. We also talked about various parks around the city having updates such as mulch and new equipment. We had an update from Ms. Eke regarding the comprehensive plan update, and we're hoping to have a working session on April 24th. Ms. Zorb gave an update on the tree and said the tree was in good standing. We didn't have any old business, but we did have new business in which a citizen would like some trees planted on Betts and Waltem Alley. People were using it as a driveway, and there was a concern regarding the city maintaining it, and Mayor Nichols said she was going to look into it to see if it's owned by the city or not, and there was also inquiry on who was maintaining Wise Park. We also had a conversation regarding Clover Knoll versus Pies Park gate being locked, where there is an easement, and Ms. Eke was investigating it, and we'll have more answers at the council meeting. And we also had a suggestion about the school being charged for rental for Shaper Park, similar to how we charge rental from Clover Knop Line Home for Pies Park. And then we adjourned at 7:06 PM, and we will have our next meeting.
May 8th.
May 8th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Next up is Budget and Finance.
Our last meeting was Monday, April 10th at 7:30. We went into executive session. We talked about the air conditioner and gave an update with that, the finance software, our digital sign, and then we adjourned. Our next meeting is May 8th at 7:30.
Mr. President.
Ms. Underwood?
Underwood.
I had a question for Ms. Alexander, but you were going kinda fast there, so. I'm sorry. May I ask her a question about her meeting?
Sure.
Overview, Ms. Alexander. So you gave an update about the senior center, and so and I was just kinda curious as to what renovations need to be made to the senior center.
Well, in the report, it just briefly stated things such as the codes and possibly things in the kitchen. It didn't go, and Ms. Clear wasn't here to give those meat and potatoes details.
Okay, so.
And fire extinguishers and things of that nature, curtains.
So curtains. Okay, so I went to, and I'm no longer on your committee, that's why I'm asking these questions, just for everybody's edification. I went to a function in Mount Helfie, and it was just a room, probably about not even half the size of this room, and it was very nice. There was no kitchen, and they just kinda, they had a table where they had their food there. There were no fire extinguishers. Not saying that that was okay, but there were none. And there was a function, there was a DJ, we were there, they paid for it. It was, you know, so it just seems to me like if I didn't know any better, I'm trying to understand why that space cannot be used at least for basic things. I understand the curtains and the, using air quotes with the word curtains, and fire extinguishers. Fire extinguishers are important, but a kitchen clearly is not necessary if you, you know, give people advance notice of that. And I know that you're just the messenger, but I was just kinda trying to.
Are you referring to the Mount Helfie Community Center?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
No, there's actually, they have like just a building that they use for an event center.
Oh, the pool, where the pool is?
No, on, nope. It's on Hamilton Avenue, maybe right across Compton. It's next to that Dutch Bakery.
Oh.
Right. You wouldn't even know it was there.
I didn't know.
Right. Exactly, because it's literally just a big room.
It's a refurbishment business is what it is.
Right. They just, a room where they put some tables, and now they're renting it out as an event space. So I just wanna kinda throw that out there.
Okay.
Well, I asked Ms. Clear about it.
Okay. That's all I have. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next up is Rules and Public Policy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We haven't met since we met last month. Our next meeting is scheduled for next week, which is April the?
24th.
Oh, 24th. That's when it's scheduled for. At 6:30.
Thank you. And Public Safety?
Thank you, Mr. President. We haven't met since last month. Our next meet, the Public Safety meeting is scheduled for April 24th at 7:30.
Thank you. Are there any ad hoc reports tonight?
Mr. President.
Ms. Zorb?
You caught me off guard. I wasn't paying attention to my calendar. I believe the Tree Commission has a meeting this Wednes, yes, this Wednesday at 5:30 in the Sperry Room.
Thank you. Any other ad hoc committee reports? Alright, hearing none. We'll move on to administrative reports. Good evening, Madam Mayor. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. The first thing that I did have is I wanted to, this Thursday, April 20th, is the regularly scheduled CIC meeting. It will be rescheduled until the following week. So instead of the 20th, it'll be on the 27th at 6:30, I believe. The other thing I would, wanted to remind everyone that this weekend, this Saturday, is the, has a new name. It used to be our regular cleanup day. It's called the Community Take Action Day, and it's from 9 to 12. You check in here from 9 to 11. If you're interested in participating in any events, understand there are a lot of other things that they're gonna do this year. Instead of just cleaning up, they're going to spruce up. So planting trees, planting flowers, mulching. So it's a great event. We typically sometimes have a small number and sometime a large number of volunteers. It just depends. If you wanna be a part of that, then you check again, come here to sign up. I did receive, I had a couple things. I did receive a letter from, oh my gosh, Rita. So I know council members are appointed as delegates and alternate delegates. Ms. Anderson was our delegate, and Ms. Zorb is the alternate. I'm not sure if Ms. Zorb is stepping up and someone's taking her place, or however be it. We need an additional person because they sent a letter and they have an actual meeting coming up, and they need representation at that meeting. I can pass this letter on to you, Ms. Zorb. You have one as well. Okay. So that meeting is in June, but you need a delegate for that. I also received, let's start it with the revolution. Well, no, wait on that one. I received from the Arbor Day Foundation, and I wanted to make mention of this. We know Arbor Day is coming up on April 29th. We have a celebration here as well on that day. But North College Hill achieved Tree City USA recognition by meeting the program's all four requirements. So that was really good. I guess some of them didn't meet all four requirements, which are maintaining a tree board or department, having a tree care ordinance, dedicating an annual community forestry budget of at least $2 per capita, and hosting an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. So kudos to our Tree Commission and to everyone else who are participating in planting those trees. I also, at one time, remember we had a conversation in a meeting about, there was two. We talked about the Tax Incentive Review Council. And so in 2020, Amber Bailey and Ms. Zorb were appointed as members to this particular council, from this particular council. I'm not sure if we wanna revisit that. I have that ordinance here as well. It's actually, well, resolution 15-2020, if someone wants to replace Ms. Bailey. I'm not sure if Ms. Zorb wants to continue on, but it's the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council and the Tax Incentive Review Council. So I have that here as well. And when, I wanna just piggyback just briefly on Ms. Underwood when she talked about the senior center. I've had multiple people reach out to me because they would like to utilize the center for small things. I met with a gentleman about a week or so ago, and he has a very positive youth program that he may need a space for. He all, he had grants for it, so he's looking for a space. So whatever we need to do to, you know, I know one of it teaches vocals with the kids, and he teaches them every avenue and just other things. So people wanna be in there. We want our seniors to have a place and to be able to possibly utilize it for other things. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWolff?
I wanted to address the mayor. I had spoke with Ms. Zorb last week about replacing Margie for the, the tax incentive, not tax incentive. I wanna do that one too, but I wanted to be.
Rita.
Please?
Rita.
Rita, thank you. I wanted to be the replacement for Margie and then for Amber.
Okay.
So if we would make a motion tonight.
I guess we would have to probably do a new resolution for replacing.
Right.
On both. Or you can make the motion with Rita. But for the tax incentive, we probably need a new resolution.
Okay.
And I can hand this over to you.
I have.
Unless Ms. Zorb gave you a copy of the Rita?
No, I have all that. I got it from Ms. Eke.
Ms. Eke handed it to us.
Eke, Jennifer.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Eke gave us a copy.
Okay.
Is that all, Ms. DeWolff?
That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mayor, I'm a little confused, and I know that I'm kinda harping on this a little bit, so I'm not trying to offend anybody today. I promise. Today, right. So if, who, whose decision is it about the senior center? Because it just seems like it's a little frou-frou to me, and that's a made-up word, but it is. It just seems a little frou-frou when I was just in a place where it was just a room and some tables, and.
So one of the things that we initially had, I don't know if it's a hot date, cold date, of we wanted to do April, but once the fire department went in, there are no working smoke detectors at all.
I can go get some from Home Depot. What else we got?
The fired extinguisher was.
I think Home Depot has those too?
I'm sure they do. But the fire chief, I'm sure, is working on that part. Those are the only things that I foresaw that was an issue. I would agree with you. I don't think that we necessarily need to have the kitchen up and running as long as there's electricity, but we do need to be sure. I would prefer that there are working smoke detectors and fire extinguishers and making sure. I can tell you that one of the doors had an issue. I'm not sure if that was on their list when they went in as well.
Mr. President.
In the back, because you have to have so many.
It just, I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to offend anybody. I have to, I have to make sure that I, I know, 'cause I can come across as combative sometimes. However, it just seems to me like the room that I was in, they're making money there. That can, you know, it can earn money if we're renting that out as an event space. Then we can kinda earn the money to buy the freezer or refrigerator or whatever appliance there is.
And I absolutely agree with you.
Because it's a way bigger space than I was in, and they charged like not a little bit of money for us to be in it.
So initially, one of the issues, we had to get insurance. We do have the insurance. But I am more comfortable, as long as I know when we're renting out to residents, if, that there are those items in there. Now, what we can do is see what, where they are in the process, but I'm not comfortable with a resident renting that out or what have you, or even with our seniors being in there doing their volleyball or what have you, and something happened and there's no. Now, what they did prior to us getting the building, that's them. I'm not comfortable with that type of liability for the city.
So how can we, how can we help you? Like, because it just seems like, I'm hearing a lot of people saying, well, we need smoke detectors, and you can get smoke detectors from anywhere. As a matter of fact, you can go to another fire department and get smoke detectors for free from the city fire departments.
Well, I do believe that they have to be up to a particular code for the type of building, and I do know that was one of the things that they were looking to as, into as well, to see how many people can actually be in the building now, because, for instance, the room that they use to do like their pottery, that room won't be accessible anymore. So you obviously couldn't use that in your account, because they won't go back there. So.
Do you need something from us?
No, we, I can check with Ms. Clear unless Ms. Eke knows. I had a different report of when they're putting the stuff in, when.
I know they were working on it.
Okay. Because we met about this last week. So I can find out, contact, I can contact Mr. Atkins and Chief Fels to see where they are in the process.
Mr. President. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, because that's who we reached out to.
Ms. Zorb?
Mr. President.
Oh, hang on. I forgot. Ms. Duxteen did say something earlier. Sorry.
That's okay. Couple things in regard to that. So I heard Ms. Underwood angry, council member.
Not angry, not angry.
I heard her say, who's in charge of that? Like, who's in charge of pushing that? Is that Ms. Clear or that under your tutelage? Like, I guess I'm just trying to understand where's the prioritization for that and who's, who's, who's driving it?
So Ms. Clear is doing a lot of leg work. I'm pretty sure if I said, open it tomorrow, no ifs, ands, or buts, they would open it, but I don't wanna be premature.
Got it.
In opening it, if that makes sense, as I see it. We can open it, and we can put the seniors in there in the same situation or position that they were in before, but we don't have the bus to bring them there. We're not even talking about a van, you know, to get them there. I'm talking about safety, public safety, and having them safe when they come.
Fair. My question wasn't around a rush. It was just trying to understand what was driving it. The other, I guess, question I had regarding the senior center is, I do, I don't know about the other council members, but I'm very much for all the room being used multi-purpose or the building used multi-purpose, but being that it was initially a senior building, and they are so passionate about being there, I just wanna make sure that we create the space for them first, and the schedule for them first, and then kind of schedule all the other events around that. Or is that in lieu as well?
Yes, that was one of the first things, because we talked about having a soft open for them, even if they came, because they, they wanna come socialize. They wanna be amongst their friends who they haven't been able to do so with. So that was one of the things that we talked about, that even, you know, paint and repairing tiles was one of the things that we talked about. If you look at the tiles, it has like little nicks in it, but they said that was from another group that used to rent it out. So one of the things that we did talk about was like a soft opening for them. Maybe they can, we can schedule where they can come in and do their volleyball, which is what they've really been stressing about coming to do. But I see it, they can serve coffee. They can't make breakfast.
One final comment and question. Comment is, I mean, technically, once we get the building up to like the fire extinguishers and the smoke detectors, I mean, they were using the building as is beforehand. I'm sure they'd be happy to just come and meet, even if it's just like social things. The other question is, do you have a date in which, or a projection of the date in which, you know, things will be ready?
Well, I had initially was, I was shooting for April 1, but after Ms. Clear came back with her report of them checking on the smoke detectors and the fire extinguishers, when I met with Ms. Eke last week, we did not come up with a different date for those reasons. So again, I will check to see where they are, and hopefully we can do something mid-May.
Okay.
Ms. Zorb?
So I guess now I'm gonna be the bad guy in the room. So I know when we first talked about purchasing the building for a dollar, I had asked the city administration at that time, what is the plan for the building? And I was, to my knowledge, I don't know that council has ever been given a plan, like what is, what is the plan going forward before we open this? I'd like to know what, what we plan to do with it. And then to coincide with that, who's going to run slash organize all of it? Like who's, who is from on, like who in the city is going to run that building? And I would hope that that would be in that plan. The other thing that I would like to hear from, and I don't wanna put him on the spot and make him answer me now, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Dieters to know what, if the levy for seniors is supporting that building, how much, is there some kind of, is there like a match? Like, does the city have to put equal parts in of, of funding to allow that building to be used for other purposes besides seniors? Like, what, what does that handshake look like? And it can be in the plan. Your answer can be in the plan. You don't have to answer me now, but if you know the answer, I'd love to hear it. If you don't, I'll, I'll look for it in the plan. And I'm calling it a plan, using air quotes. I don't know what you wanna call it.
There was one question sent to me and one question sent to someone else in that. So I'll answer mine first.
Can you, can you use the mic though?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would have to look at the language of the levy, the seniors levy, but I'm assuming if I looked at that language, it would allow you to maintain.
His microphone doesn't work.
Upkeep a facility for senior services. ...upkeep a facility for senior services. And as long as that...
Mr. Dieters? Could you please speak into the mic better?
I don't think that mic's working.
Closer or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
As long as that was the, the purpose of what that money was used for, you should be okay for that. As far as it being used for other purposes, there's nothing that I would think that would prevent you from doing that as long as the main purpose was being used for seniors. So if it, you know, if it was used from eight to six on Monday through Friday, and then occasionally the city used it for other purposes, I would not have a, wouldn't be no problem with that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Are you finished, Ms. Ord?
I am.
Ms. DeWolff?
Super quick. An apology to you, Mr. Dieters. That microphone doesn't work like the rest of them.
Sorry.
So you were, you were speaking into it. We just, it's not amplified in the room.
I have to get really close to it.
My apologies.
All right. Next up, we have the city administrator's report. Good evening, Ms. Ikki.
Good evening. I will be brief tonight. I don't know if the mayor already mentioned this, but April 22nd is Community Take Action Day. I know we talked about this last time. But given that the date is this Saturday, I wanted to make sure that that was top of mind for everyone. There is information on the city's website and your check-in is from nine to 11 here at this building. So if you are interested, please see the website for additional details. And we will be happy to plug you in. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ikki. Next up, we have the law director's report. Mr. Dieters?
Is that better? Can you hear? I want to get really close to it. Almost like eat it. There were a couple of emails that went around today regarding a potential easement over that property to the park. I know, I'm, I'm not certain that we actually own an easement dating back to the 1960s. I'm not sure if one was ever actually drafted and conveyed and actually then recorded with the, with the county. Jennifer, you looked and didn't find one on the recorder site. So the next steps are going to have to be to go down to the recorder's office to see if for some reason there's something down there that's not online. If it's likely that that's, it was never actually granted, it might have been just permission that was given to the city to, to utilize that pathway. And then if that were the case, there still may be some other legal remedies available. There's something in the law called adverse possession. If you use a piece of property for a particular period of time and the owner doesn't object to it or grants it at some point, they could actually have grant it an easement or grant it the property to, to an adjoining property owner. So I don't know if that's something that the city would want or not want to pursue. We probably at that point would want to talk about that in executive session. But we'll continue to look to see if there's an easement. But at this time, I would guess that there is not an easement, that that was just a, an agreement that was done at some point from the previous property owners.
Mr. President?
Ms. Dukstein?
Mr. Dieters? I think, just according to my previous real estate background, that even if there isn't any written law, that Ohio law says that if it's been used that way for a very long time, that we can, it's like air quote, a law or an agreement that shouldn't be broken.
Right, Ms. Dukstein. That's what they call the adverse possession requirement. But you have to sometimes enforce that. So if the owner's not willing to just accept that, then you'd have to go to court to enforce that right. And then, then at that point, something would be recorded.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Ms. Ord?
So I believe you had also mentioned in some of those emails that there's a sign that mentions, "We Thrive." Would we, we, would we thrive? Sorry, I couldn't get that out. Would they have any of the records that might even coincide with that?
We've checked to see when we made the grant application back, I think, in 2011. And we've not heard back from them yet.
Okay.
So, I mean, we continue to look into it and we just don't have all the information yet.
Is that all you have, Mr. Dieters?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Underwood?
I have a question for Mr. Dieters, actually. Mr. Dieters? I believe that the senior levy is due to be on the ballot soon, this year maybe. Is that right?
I believe so. Correct.
So I know that there are deadlines that have to be met. And I just want to make sure, like, because the first deadline is coming up. So I just wanted to make sure that we're being mindful of that. And just ask you, like, where is the legislation in process for that? Because I know that there are like two steps to that process. And we have summer session. And I don't want anybody calling me this summer to try to have extra meetings. So...
My understanding, it is up for renewal this November. You have to have the final paperwork into the Board of Elections 75 days prior to the date of the election, which is going to take you some time in August, probably.
Yes.
I think, I'd have to check, but I think we already drafted the documents. And there's actually two documents that you have. There's the first document where you have to have the county auditor certify what your property values are and the jurisdiction where the levy is going to run. That's the first order, piece of legislation you have to pass. Then, once the county auditor certifies the values of the property, then you actually pass a second piece of legislation that places it on the ballot and directs the Board of Elections to have it on the ballot. It's been a while, but I think I've already done it. But it's one of those things where you get so far ahead of the game that you forget you've done something. So we'll double check that. But thanks for the reminder.
All right. Next is the finance director's report. She is not here this evening. So we'll move on to call of members, starting with Ms. Dukstein.
Quick question, Mr. President. Is the finance director going to come? Is she supposed to, she's supposed to be here, right?
No, she's not required to be here. So she probably won't. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Okay. I just want to make sure because sometimes Ari was here. I don't remember, I didn't remember. It just was weird.
No worries. It is weird, but you know, it's what it is.
Thanks. Again, condolences to the unwanted Dunson families. I certainly know that the funerals happened over the last time since we met last. And the heartfelt emotions that went out for both of those families. I'm just really, really sorry for both of the losses and wanted to convey that again. No skin in the game, other than it happened in our, on our territory. And I'm just mindful and both prayerful for those families. Thank you to the Tree Commission for everything that they do. My other question, and I saved it for this, was for the mayor, the Community Reinvestment Council. Is that what you said it was? That, Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
What, what is that?
Tax Incentive Review Council. Is that what you...
She mentioned the, the tax incentive.
The community, I, I have Community Reinvestment Council. That's what I wrote because that's what my...
That's what I retained.
The Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council. And the tax incentive.
What's the Reinvestment Council or the...
Two members. It doesn't necessarily say. I remember, was that something that Ms. Bailey came with?
Yeah, that's what she said.
Could you tell me the, the legislation number and I can look it up? 1520. Because she's actually the only, it was something that she came in her committee. Did we ever pass it? It doesn't give the details of actually what it is that they, do you remember?
Mr. President?
And I think you threw on the tax incentive with it. Because she was actually the only member on that particular one. No one else signed in to be one. And I know there's a couple of things that she came up with that she was working on. If I had to guess, it would go fall into lines when she was doing the homeowners assistance. And it all fell within that same bucket. Getting, because she was on CIC as well. And getting those residents and looking into properties in order to increase home ownership here. So it all fell with under that same umbrella. No one else stepped in on that actual, according to this. She was the only one who wanted to be on that actual incentive.
If you don't mind, after the meeting, can I look at that information? I happen to stansely happen to call down to Hamilton County Auditor's Commission today in regard to something personal. But I came across another department where they have grants for the seniors. And I just spent a long time on the phone talking about how they run that. And I'd like to bring that information back to us. So that was just right down our alley today. We can kind of work together to look again at that homeowners thing. Other cities are doing it. They're doing it with ease. We just have to tap into their process. Or maybe not reinvent the wheel so we can kind of get something going for our residents. I'm not saying I'm interested in leadership, but I would love, love to offer the information. But I'm not opposed to leadership either. So that's all. That's my report, I guess. Questions?
Thank you. Ms. DeWolff?
Never mind. Oh, wait.
It's call of members.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I was going to respond to her and I thought, never mind. I, I understand the, the horrific events that took place and, and my condolences to all families and members involved. Also, I'd like to pat someone on the back, and it might be Ms. Ikki, for the reflectors on the islands put up so quickly. They are, it really is a big, big difference. Thank you.
You're welcome. We are still working with JMA on some other measures we could take along Hamilton Avenue. But once we get that recommendation put together, I'll be back with that information for council.
I'm finished.
That's it? Thank you. Ms. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to offer my condolences to both families who lost a family member in that horrific accident on Hamilton Avenue. And I just read a news article yesterday about another accident on Hamilton Avenue just in the last few days, which, you know, obviously, you know, something needs to happen on Hamilton Avenue. So I guess we'll, we'll get that figured out. I also would just like to say to the mayor that I don't want to be in charge of anything because I don't have time to be in charge of anything. That being said, that I think that I can figure out how to get that building up and running. And it won't take me six months to do it either. So I am at your disposal for that. But I'm going to repeat that I do not want to run.
So just send me over your information.
No, I don't want to be in charge of anything. But I am happy, happy, happy to help. Because it just seems like it's being overcomplicated. It's just not that hard. Maybe it's not that, it's not that hard for me. So it's, I'm not trying to be combative or offensive. But I think that I can get that done pretty quickly. Not, won't even take me a month. So I am at your disposal, if you like. But if, you know, if we're, if we're still in the same place a month from now, then maybe I'll probably start getting a little more aggressive because it just seems, again, I was in a room. I don't mean to beat this dead horse, but I am going to. I was in a room and it was just not even a fancy room. It was literally just a room, just an open space with some tables, with some, some of those stretchy tablecloths on it and some...
And it's an event center.
And it's an event center. And they charged money, like a lot, not a little bit of money either. It wasn't a lot, but it was like, hmm. Just, you know, those kinds of things. You know, every, every drop in the bucket helps, you know? You know, you can walk the journey of a thousand steps, starts with a single step or whatever that quote is. You know what I'm saying? So, you know, there are, there are ways that we can get a van. You know, I know that there are grants that we can write to get a van. I know that there, there are ways to do that for the seniors. And so, again, I am happy to help. Don't want to be in charge, but I am happy to help. That's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Underwood.
Ms. Alexander?
I would like to offer my condolences to both families in regards to the tragedy. I would also like to thank the Tree Commission for all the hard work that they do and talking about the award that, you know, the four categories that we met for the city. That's an awesome thing. Also, we are still looking for a chair for Community Development and Recreation. I am the vice chair. We're looking for a chair. Don't want that to fall through the cracks. Also, wanted to remind people to be mindful of the crosswalks. When I'm driving down Hamilton Avenue, those lights are flashing and I'm still seeing cars just, you know, continuing their, you know, children and, you know, adults in those crosswalks just waiting. And, you know, you need to stop. And I just, I just don't want to see another tragedy. I don't know how much more flashier you can get to notify someone that someone is trying to cross. I just want people to be mindful, you know, not only of that crosswalk that's just so blatant, but all the crosswalks in the area. Because we have a lot of walkers in the area. You know, me and my children, we walk a lot, you know, in our area. You know, you're always supposed to be careful, but you hope that those, you know, crosswalk areas are, you know, safe spaces. That's all. And we need a chair for recreation, the community development.
Ms. Ord?
Get somebody else to do it.
Mr. Everett, do we need a chair? I'm just curious.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Sorry. That was not an invitation. Just poking fun. So the only thing that I would like to mention is that this Thursday, the president of the Tree City and myself will be going to the Tree City Awards Luncheon. And it is going to be in Fairfield. So hopefully, we have more little prizes for the city when we come back. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Blythe?
No comment at this time.
All right. That takes us to remarks from the audience. I actually have one on the agenda here is Mr. Vernon Webster. If you would please take the, take the podium there, adjust the microphone. Please state your name, your address, and hold your comments to five minutes if you can.
Okay. My name is Vernon Webster. I live at 7,003 Clover Newell Drive. I moved there in 1987. From 1987 till today, well, excuse me, till February, I walked in the park every day, at least once, sometimes twice, sometimes three times. I come up here today to see why the gates are locked. I heard all the comments that few people made. I understand those, but I still don't see why the gates are locked. I could not find out who owns that property. I looked online trying to figure out who bought that property. I have a feeling that it's the big company that owns all the property in the United, in the city. You know the name of the company. I can't think of it.
Vine Brook.
Please? Vine Brook. I think it's Vine Brook because I was told when the guy was looking at, that he was looking at for Vine Brook. I talked to the lady who was moving in. I asked her about why her husband put a lock on the gate. And I explained to her that we had been using that. I walked my child through kindergarten, through there. She just told me the other day she was so happy because every time I walked her, I'd teach her something. I'd teach her how to do grounding words, how to spell, how to do math. Well, I had six kids graduating North College Hill. We all used that. We used it for ballparks, for soccer games. And I did read the Ohio law that says that after 20 years of constant use, it ought to be your domain. So I was just coming up here to see why that wasn't so. I know that the city has "We Thrive." They have three pathways. If you look on the sign right out here in front of the door, two of them go through that park. And if you can't go down that walkway, the city rebuilt that walkway with a reef five, five money. Since 1987, when I moved in over there, my son used to shovel that sidewalk and get paid from the Board of Education. The lady that opened and shut the gates still gets a retirement check from the Board of Education. I don't know who owns that property, but it ought to be open to the city. It ought to be open so I can walk up to Pies Park. If you remember the little area up there... If you remember the little area up there for the kids to play in, I helped build that with a grant. We got to build that up through the, the mayor that was before Ms. Nichols, I think. I can't think of her name, but her husband got the grant to build that, along with Sean O'Rourke and myself and some other people in the neighborhood. We built that. We put that in there. We can't go play on it because if for me to go play on it now, when I go out to walk my three miles every morning, I have to walk up Hamilton Avenue. Now, you all know how Hamilton Avenue is, but look at it when it's got half one of the lanes blocked. It's really bad now to walk, to talk, to drive, to do anything. So I just come up here today to see why that wasn't. I talked to the lady that's the head of the Recreation Committee, Lees.
Claire. Ms. Claire. Anna-Lease Claire.
Anna-Lease Claire. I knew her name, and she asked if I could come up here and say something, so that's why I come up here tonight. I thought I supposed to have five or six people with me, but I see none of them showed up. They're probably like me, Monday nights is a bad night for me because I usually either play golf or bowl. So bow in the summer, bow in the winter and play golf in the summer, but I took a night off tonight because it was 42 degrees and I didn't want to play golf. But I appreciate anything you could do, and I would be more than happy to be kept up to date on that. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Underwood?
Mr. Webster, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm familiar with where you are talking about. Can you just explain to me, like, where exactly you're talking about?
If you walk out here and go, go up to Kleindale, you walk down Kleindale through Pies Park, you go to the north, and you come down to the northwest corner, there's a gate there, which now has a padlock on it. There's a sign up there that says, "In Partners With Nancy," or "Don and Nancy Met Since 1969." So that's when that was built, in '69. And I don't know if the Board of Education built that to get people to walk, to get the kids back in that area a chance to walk to school this way. My kids come this way all the time. We lived at 1492 Foxwood before we moved, before we bought the house down here, and my kids come to school all, that way all the time because it's the closest way to get to school. So it just goes through the northwest, the northern side of the park and through that gate down there. And in 2018, I started walking that every day. I weighed 285 pounds, and now I weigh 222.
Wow.
But I started walking that. I try to walk four and five miles. I come over, I walk through the park, and in the summertime, I get over at 8:00. Or sometimes 6:00, 7:00. Soon as it got daylight, I'm out doing it because it gets hot, and I tried to do that. And now to get to where I used to go, I have to go all the way up Hamilton Avenue, go down past the, all the way down to the First Street past the Dollar Store, which is the one that goes up the hill, which has been, I know, all of you know what I'm talking about up there.
Goodman? No? Not that far. Goodman?
No, no, all the way down past the Dollar Store, down, down, well, Dollar General, maybe.
Sundale and Mice Beach Mall?
Yes, ma'am.
The old beach mall.
That's what I'm talking about. I have to walk down there just to get a mile, then I have to turn around and walk back home. It used to be, I'd just come over to the park, I'd walk up and down through the park, back to the back soccer field and back down, and now they've closed that off. So, I mean, it's just, it makes it harder, not harder, because I still do the same amount of walking. It just makes it inconvenient to walk around. And I have, I had five or six people in the neighborhood that said the same thing. Sean O'Rourke has five boys. He used to walk them up here to play soccer, just to get out and walk around, play in the field, run and jump. There's another gentleman that just moved in down there. He has five young girls. He brought them up here. Now he can't bring them up here because you can't walk them a mile and a half to get here. We had to walk down to Hamilton, come down to the street out here, and come back down to the street. I can't think of names. I'm just, don't think that fast. I wrote some stuff down, but since you were already talking about it, I just...
So what is it that Vine Brook purchased? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I don't know. I'm not sure that Vine Brook purchased that, but I'm, I think they did. I don't know for a fact. The lady, when I went over and talked to her, I, I said, "Did you buy this?" And she said, "No, but we're going to buy it in two years." So I don't know what that means, but Vine Brook also bought the house next door to me, coming back down Clover Newell, and the gutters are falling off the house. One of the downspouts is down in the yard. They took the fence down between my house and their house, and I asked them to see if they're going to replace it. They said, "No, we don't replace nothing." So that's what I know about Vine Brook, and I looked Vine Brook up, and they're one of the bigger property owners in the United States, I believe.
Mr. President?
Ms. Nichols?
If, if, I'm not sure if Vine Brook does own it. If they do, it hasn't transferred over yet, because when I checked last, that was not the owner. But, you know, sometimes it takes a while before it actually will show up on the site. So if they do own it, it just isn't indicating that on the site yet. It's a different company.
I don't, as I said, I tried to look today to see who owned it because I wanted, if it is Vine Brook, and I know how Vine Brook works because I've dealt with them, the house next door to me, where they won't, they won't fix the downspout, so water runs off the house and runs into my basement. And I had to prove to that because my back door into my basement has rotted away in three and a half years because every time the water runs down there, it gets up this high and runs in the house.
Oh, no.
So if anything else, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Well, we are looking into that, sir. I have used that path many, many times as well in the 25 years I've lived in the neighborhood, so.
Same.
Same.
Yep, so.
Mr. President, if I may, the property is currently owned by Apraxis Ventures LLC. The transfer date was April 4th, which is the approximate date that we got the call that the gate was.
Well, the gate was actually locked in February because I waited till I saw somebody over there, and I went and talked to her and asked her why you locked the gate. And I explained to them the same thing I explained to you. I walk that all the time, people up and down the block. I know a lot of people in the neighborhood that walk that. They take their dogs out, walk them through the park, and bring them back home, but it's just inconvenience to some people and convenience to her.
Mr. President?
Ms. Underwood?
I'm sorry, I know I spoke before, but you can let me speak a second time if you want to.
Sure.
So, Mr. Dieters, so since the, the ownership changed on April 4th, if we were going to have some kind of litigation or something to enforce the easement or the adverse possession of, like, where we've been using that path or whatever it is for, since 1987, like Mr. Webster indicated, what, is there a limit, like a time where we have to do that? And if so, what do you need us to do?
I just found out about this today, like, literally, like, probably three hours ago. So we're still in the process of researching it, and then if we file an action, we'll have to file, I think it's called a quiet title action, in order to enforce whatever rights we believe we might have over that. So there's no, it's not impacted by the fact that it's changed ownership.
Okay, so I, and I'm not being combative. I have to do this with my husband all the time. I'm like, honey, I promise you, I am not being combative, okay? I just, I just don't want it to...
Is that like saying with all due respect right before you disrespect somebody?
Right.
I'm kidding.
That's exactly what it is, though.
Right.
I, I just don't want it to, like, fall through the cracks like some things do, and I know that, you know, people have motives, and not you, I'm not saying you, but I don't, I'm not, I just want to make sure that we, like, aggressively address this particular issue because I just feel like, I hear a lot about this path that people walk, and I'm not a walking fan myself, I should be, but I, I just want to aggressively address it. And so I just, is there anything that you need us to do or?
No, at this time, I think Jennifer has it pretty much, she's on top of it. She's looking in to the recorder's office and then trying to get in contact with the owner, and then if we can't get it done through some type of collaboration, then we'll file whatever action we have to file. The only thing I can tell you, I don't want to be sort of a downer, but as you know, I mean, it's not going to be a fast litigation. It could take literally almost a year probably, depending on where we were. We could try to file some type of injunction with it too, but if we weren't granted an injunction, we'd have to, it may take a while.
Okay, I just, okay, I just wanted to, because I also know that sometimes you send those companies letters and they kind of ignore them or, so I just want us to be aggressive about it. That's, I, that's all.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Ms. Duxteen?
Ms. Ikki, have you, and I know this is pretty recent on your plate, have you had an opportunity to possibly reach out to the LLC that, just to see if they're willing to be more appeasing?
No.
Given the history?
I have not, but we certainly will.
You also sound like you're sick. Are you not feeling well?
Not feeling well.
I hope you feel a lot better.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Webster. Do we have anyone else signed in, Mr. Hedger?
No, Mr. President.
All right. We will then go to legislation when you're ready, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have third reading ordinance 1, 2023, and ordinance making additional appropriations.
Mr. President?
Ms. Dewald?
I move to adopt ordinance 1, 2023.
Mr. President?
Ms. Zorb?
A second.
Motion by Ms. Dewald, second by Ms. Zorb, to adopt ordinance 01, 2023. Any discussion? Mr. Hedger, please call the roll.
Ms. Duxteen?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb?
Yes.
Ms. Blythe?
Yes.
Motion passed, 6-0.
Thank you. Next reading when you're ready.
Third reading ordinance number 20, excuse me, ordinance number 2, 2023, and ordinance to authorize a supplemental payment to Lawanda Willis for finance manager duties.
Ms. Underwood?
I move to adopt ordinance 2-2023.
Mr. President?
Ms. Duxteen?
I'd like to second that motion.
Motion by Ms. Underwood, second by Ms. Duxteen, to adopt ordinance 02-2023. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Duxteen?
I'd like to address this. Ms. Ikki went through and checked again for any payments that were reported by anyone else, and there were none found, and I just want Ms. Ikki to just confirm that for us yet again, just because we've, on council, had some questions about it, and I just want to put that dog to rest.
Head nod as a confirmation?
Yes, I'm sorry. We did look into it, and we could not find any additional payments for Ms. Willis.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Ms. Dewald?
There were a lot of transactions that could not be confirmed. We all know the budget was a wreck and still is, and I find it completely, and I was told by her that she received a $1,000 bonus. Just because it can't be found doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Mr. President?
Ms. Underwood?
Okay, so at the risk of, you know, repeating myself, but I really am not trying to be combative today, okay, to all of my colleagues. But if there are payments that are not reflected in the books, and Ms. Ikki has indicated she's gone through the books, and if there are, and then Ms. Dewald is saying that there was a payment made that's not reflected in the books, that sounds like a felony to me. So I think we have a bigger issue than just this little bitty one. So I guess I'm wanting some clarification, and I'm not saying felony charges who, but that just means that if you can take $1,000 and give it to somebody, and we can't find any record of it, then if you can take $1,000, then you can take $10,000. That's, you know, I represent criminals or people accused of crimes all of the time, and financial crimes, that is, that is how they occur. It is usually someone who's in charge of the money, and there's, like, no, that person's not, like, you know, there's no oversight, there's no, like, that person's not kind of engaging, you know? So I guess my, Ms. Ikki says she didn't see it, Ms. Dewald thinks that it did happen, then the bigger issue is, like, okay, so is money going out of our city, and we don't know that it's going out of the city? Because that's, like, criminal stuff. I'm just saying, so, that's all I got.
Mr. President?
Ms. Zorb?
So I, I too was in the room when Ms. Willis stated that she got the $1,000 bonus or payment from our former finance director, and I understand that they can't find in the books, but I guess I, I would fall into the Ms. Underwood category at this point because that concerns me even more, that either, for some reason, she would tell us something that was inaccurate, that wouldn't make sense at all, and then it couldn't be found in an audit trail is just concerning to me. I'd also like to point out that this is the third time that we've tried to pass similar type ordinance for this purpose. Granted, it's been different dollar amounts each time, but this is the third attempt at this. That's all.
Ms. Nichols?
That, the accusation of the $1,000, I wasn't there. It was brought to my attention. I did have a conversation with Ms. Willis. She denied it. So we can go back and forth and point fingers to say who said what, in the same manner that Ms. Dewald, Ms. Zorb said. She said it. She said they're not telling the truth when they say that. Again, I wasn't there. Prior to Ms. Ikki coming, we looked into the matter. So it was looked into on three different occasions. We went back and did a double check. The only thing we looked through the books. We looked through Pay Corps. We didn't see anything. We do not take in cash, so it wasn't given to her in the form of cash.
Mr. President?
We can't make something appear that wasn't there. I can't, to be honest, I can't even get into what the conversation was, whether or not, what was said and who said what, because I wasn't there. So all I'm hearing is one person saying she said it and the person saying that they didn't, and I like to say that someone is saying they're not telling the truth. She said, "You're lying." I, I wasn't there. Again, Ms. Ikki looked into it when she heard about it. I looked into it. I know Mr. Mosby looked into it. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Ms. Dewald?
I, I wouldn't put the word accusation. It was a statement.
Okay.
You can't call it, you can't call it what it is not.
It's an accusation to my ear because I wasn't there.
And I just want to remind you...
So it's accusatory.
I want to remind you, Mayor, that when we were in executive session, you told us about two conversations you had with two different people, and we had to make decisions on that. That was hearsay.
Exactly, in the same manner of what you're saying that she told you was hearsay. It's hearsay.
We're going to stop this, and we are going to vote. Please call the roll.
Ms. Duxteen?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
No.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb?
No.
Ms. Blythe?
No.
Motion is tied. Mr. Graver?
I'm going to vote yes.
Motion passes. Four to seven, or four to zero, four, excuse me, four to three.
Four to three. Next reading.
Third reading ordinance number 3, 2023, and ordinance to establish a capital improvement fund and a city development recreation fund to replace the city's home improvement fund.
Mr. President?
Ms. Underwood?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 3-2023.
Mr. Graver, I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ms. Underwood to adopt ordinance 3, 2023, with a second by Ms. Zorb. Any discussion? Motion by Ms. Underwood to adopt ordinance three, 2023, with a second by Ms. Zorb. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Duxteen.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Ms. Underwood.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Zorb.
Yes.
Ms. Blythe.
Yes.
Motion passed. Six oh.
Next reading.
Third reading ordinance number four, 2023, and ordinance to provide a pay step into the police chief and fire chief for jointly assisting with the duties of the city manager.
Mr. President.
Ms. Underwood.
I move that we adopt ordinance four dash 2023.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWald.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Underwood to adopt ordinance zero-four, 2023, with a second by Ms. DeWald. Any discussion? Mr. Hedger, please call the roll.
Ms. Duxteen.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Ms. Underwood.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Zorb.
Yes.
Ms. Blythe.
Yes.
Motion passed. Six oh.
Thank you. Last reading of the evening.
First reading ordinance number five, 2023, and ordinance to amend and establish salaries and staffing levels for the city employees pursuant to the requirements of section three point oh six of the City North College Hill Charter and declare an emergency.
Mr. President.
Ms. Underwood.
Um, I'm just trying to, actually I have a question for Mr. Dieters. Um, if there is, um, a line or something in this ordinance, um, that I would like to change or something like that, how do I do that?
You would have to, I, make a motion to amend the legislation. That would have to be seconded and voted on. Then you would have to actually identify what that is going to be, and then it would have to be seconded and voted on again.
So, that's two different things that have to be like seconded and voted on?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWald.
I'd like to ask the council members, I have two copies of this ordinance, both handed to me tonight because I came here with nothing. One of them, one of them has a salary listed for Christian Hedger, the clerk, and the other one says same as council. I'd like them to look at your paperwork and see if you've got the one that says same as council. That's the one we should be voting on.
Mr. President.
Ms. Zorb.
We should be looking at the one that says dollar sign, same as council. There's also another modification on it. And when you look at the section of fire, there were two separate listings there. One was a, a yearly, an annual salary and an hourly rate. The, uh, annual salary has been removed and only the hourly rate remains.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll move forward to further remarks from the audience as it pertains to legis-
Sorry. I wasn't, can, can we stay there for a quick second?
I will back up. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Zorb.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third reading of ordinance five, 2023.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWald.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Ms. Zorb to suspend second and third readings of ordinance five, 2023, with a second by Ms. DeWald. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Duxteen.
I'm usually pretty for suspending readings, but on this particular one, I feel like there are some reservations in the room, and I also think that we kind of rushed through some corrections. I just want to see if anyone else is feeling that way.
Mr. President.
Ms. Underwood.
Um, my understanding is that we need six votes to suspend the readings, and there are only six members on council, so.
That's why I'm asking in discussion before I vote.
It would be up to your vote to, however you vote is gonna swing it.
I understand.
Um, Mr. President.
Ms. Underwood.
I'll admit that I have some reservations. So, I'll admit that. Yes, me.
Would you care, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Ms. Zorb.
Ms. Underwood, would you care to talk about your reservations?
Um, I, I don't know that I'm allowed to, so I'm not sure what I'm allowed to say. As I look at Mr. Dieters.
You're allowed to say anything you want, whether you should say it or not is another question, but you're allowed to say whatever you desire.
Um, so, my reservation is, um, so, um, I, okay, so let me ask, let me ask this question, and either Ms. Eke or the mayor, whoever has the answer to this, if you could just answer this question for me. This, uh, ordinance does not seem to reflect, um, all of the people who we pay to do duties, like, and I, you know, I kind of pay attention to finance stuff, but not really because I went to law school, didn't want to do math, so I went to law school, so. Um, if I could have done math, I probably would be a tax attorney. Um, so, my question is, are there people that we're paying to do jobs that are not listed on this salary ordinance? And if so, who are they and what jobs do they do?
I, Mr. President.
Ms. Nichols.
That, I do believe that everyone that falls within this category is on this actual document.
That's a lawyer answer, okay? So, I'm gonna rephrase my question. So.
In my mind.
Has anyone been given money for services to the city of North College Hill for, um, any reason, and that individual or person, not asking for their name, is not listed on our salary ordinance because they're not included in one of these categories?
If you're referring to a contractor, yes.
Okay. And who, who are those contractors and what exactly do they do?
Most, more than likely, the ones who are routinely are like.
Could you speak up, please?
The ones who are most likely more routinely would be the grass cutters, or more like, uh, snow, well, our people do snow removal. So, it's lawn, lawn care.
Any other people who work or who have received, um, payment or compensation from the city?
You're not necessarily talking about an ongoing, or you're just saying, we need somebody to do, there may be multiple that I cannot tell you.
For example, I've, I've, my, it is my understanding, and again, you know, this is a small town. And in a small town, everybody knows everybody's business, even when you don't want to. Like, even when you just want to go to your house and just not hear it, you still hear it because neighbors are standing outside waiting for you to get home from city council. Kind of glad it's not being recorded today. So, um, my question is, is there someone who works in the office, or who has worked in the office here, who has been paid to do anything for this city? Is that just a rumor, or is that fact? I'm sorry?
Nothing. I was being smart. I like.
Well, I, I mean, I would like to hear it. Oh, okay. That means I'm gonna talk to people when I get home. That's great.
All right. We have a motion to suspend second and third reading.
She hasn't answered yet.
Who has a question?
I just asked them a question.
Well, um, I'm trying to think so that I can understand your attorney question. We have contractors. If you're looking for individual names, no, those names are not on there. If you're referring to.
I wasn't.
And when you say this office, you mean this building?
Right.
We have an IT person that the city pays.
Okay.
That is not on this contract. I mean, on this piece of, uh, legislation.
Okay, so.
Have your, um.
I heard there was a guy who was helping, doing some finance stuff.
In finance?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
He's on here. His name is not on here. It says contractor. But Ms., uh, Underwood, this is, I want to say, administration is not necessarily responsible for the names that go on here. Now, we can tell you certain people.
Okay. That wasn't what I was asking.
Okay.
So, other than these three people on the salary ordinance.
Are you referring to a contractor who was called in to help someone in finance?
Okay, yes.
Who is not here every day?
Right.
Okay, so, so, administration can.
Right. I agree. I just want to know.
They're not an employee. We don't, I mean, so it's just like a contractor, just like lawn cutting?
Right, I agree.
We use for this service, and no, they're not on here.
Okay, so, Ms. Ms. Duxteen asked if I had a reservation, and so, my, my question was, and I'm not trying to keep you here longer, Mr. Graver.
So, I guess my question would be.
So, I guess, um, so, and, and I perf, I agree, you guys can hire whomever you want to do, whatever you need them to do contractually, is, you know, if it doesn't go over that, whatever that threshold is. However, if, for example, and Ms. Eke, I'm just using you as an example, I promise, okay? Let's say Ms. Eke doesn't know how to read. So, you hire a teacher to come in and read all of the documents to her. So, we have to pay the teacher fifty thousand dollars in addition to us paying Ms. Eke a hundred thousand dollars. That would be an issue for me, because now Ms. Eke can't read, why is Ms. Eke in charge of something that requires her to read? That's my reservation. So.
Mr. President, if I, if I could address it, because I think I'm gonna help, help you out here, I hope. Okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Dieters.
I, I, I think the concern that you have might be a legitimate concern. I just don't know if it's relevant for this piece of legislation.
It is.
Um, well, this piece of legislation is just identifying the salary for regular employees of the city.
Okay, that, you missed my point there.
Well, I'm gonna get to it, I think. Um, if there, if there are, so, there's, what that means basically is you could have regular, full-time and regular part-time employees, or employed as employees of North College Hill City. Then occasionally, um, we need additional things done. Whether that be support in the office, um, whether that be HVAC, whether it be whatever it might be, we, we contract for that, um, and either we contract by invoice and a purchase order, or we contract it through, um, a, uh, independent contractor with a ten ninety-nine issued from tax. If your concern is that you think individuals on this sheet aren't doing the job that you wish they desire, you desire them to do, that might be a valid concern. I just don't know if it's a concern about passing this legislation or not. It would be more performance-based and not pay-based. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. However, performance-based is, that's not my lane. That's this lane over here. My lane is this, this piece of legislation. That's my lane. That's the only lane I can get into. So, because I can't get into the other lane, I'm going to stay in my lane. Somebody asked me if I have a concern. That is my concern. Everybody knows what my concern is. That's all I got. Mr. President.
If, if, Mayor, do you mind if I just, I just got one point and then I want to stop. I have been opposed to putting individuals' names on this piece of legislation. We are not authorizing pay to those individuals. What council should be doing is authorizing the pay for the position. I think putting names on it sort of clouds the issue and makes it kind of bleed in maybe to some of the things that Ms. Underwood is concerned about.
Probably.
Um, I think when Ms. Eke sent it to me today, I said, I'm okay with it, but I don't know why we keep putting names on it. So, I, if you could look at it more from the perspective of you're authorizing the pay for this position. If there are individuals in those positions that council has issues with from performance basis, um, then, one, I would hope that we discuss, we discuss that in executive session and not in public. And then, and two, um.
See, you told me I could say anything I wanted to say.
I said you can. I said it may not be wise to do so. Um, and then, but not hold up. Because we've, we've had this happen in the past. We've held up pay legislation because the names are on it, and it kind of bleeds into another aspect, which I'm hoping that we can separate at some point. I, I, maybe I'm making zero sense, but that's what I'm trying to.
Mr. President.
Make that distinction.
Mr. President.
Ms. Nichols, did you have something you wanted to add?
I did. I was, um, two things. I was gonna ask Ms. Underwood, is, did she notice that someone or some position was missing? And two, I, I've always agreed with that. I don't think the names should be on there, but that's irrelevant. Did you have something or someone or, uh, okay.
Ms. DeWald.
I believe they started putting names on this piece of legislation because when people left and they filled that position, they would start at that salary that the person left. So, normally you have a starting salary, which we don't reflect that either, but I think that's how that all started. So, is there a way to circumvent that?
Yeah, I feel like, um, it's deja vu, but we talked about putting a range. So, if you said the range is X to Y, um, then, then when you start it, you would do that, or, um, and then we also talked, the other alternative is, is if someone leaves, then you amend it when the new person comes in, but you still don't list their name. You would just amend the salary.
May I ask another question, Mr. President?
Mr. Graver, I'd like to call a question.
No, I have one.
We're at the yes or no stage.
Yeah, I agree. I would like to just go to the vote, so that's what we're gonna do. Um, motion on the floor for Ms. Zorb, second by Ms. DeWald, to suspend second and third readings of ordinance five, 2023. Please call the roll.
Ms. Duxteen.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Ms. Underwood.
No.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Zorb.
Yes.
Ms. Blythe.
Yes.
Motion failed. Five one.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is further remarks from the audience as it pertains to any of the legislation. Does anyone have any concerns regarding legislation we discussed tonight? All right. We will move on to old business.
Mr. President.
Ms. Duxteen.
So, earlier in our meeting, we talked about, uh, Ms. Underwood was talking about the traffic on Hamilton Avenue, Ms., um, Alexander as well. I, and I noticed on the entry point into College Hill, from North College Hill, there are residents who've posted signs. I don't know, we have, uh, construction of our Kroger, and then we also have construction going into College Hill. Um, not the construction in College Hill, but right before that. I think if the street there is Oak Knoll, as you come out. Residents are so concerned about the speed that they have made signs and posted it on the poles, on the already, already, uh, you know, put up signs by the city to slow down. Please, you know, I, if you go down Hamilton Avenue and you look on the, you're going southbound on the right-hand side, you will see that all up and down the street, residents have posted signs. So, I just wanted to be mindful that the public is very aware that we really, really do need to slow down on Hamilton Avenue. Families are being impacted. They're raising awareness and, I mean, literally posting signs, handwritten signs.
They had a rally.
That's it.
Any other old business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Underwood.
Um, so, Mr. Dieters, um, at the risk of making you like rub your head even more, um, so, if we, how can we get the speed humps? Like, how can we speed that up? Do we need to like write legislation? How can we just like make it so that next month, there are speed humps being installed on Hamilton Avenue?
I think Hamilton Avenue is a state route, is it not?
Mm-hmm. So, is Reading Road.
So, you'd have to get approval by the state. We can't put, it's not our road.
So, Reading Road has speed humps. Did, is, do you?
I'm not sure how that would have happened. Um, and my guess is at some point, there was some type of request from the state, but I know that we can't just do it on our own because it's not a municipal road.
Okay, so, what, just, I need to just figure out what the city did with Reading Road, and then we, we can just do that. That's what we need to do?
Correct. I'm not sure what, you're saying the city of Cincinnati did it on Reading Road?
Mm-hmm.
In Avondale?
Yep.
I'm sure there was some way they went about doing that by talking to ODOT, but I'm not. Um, JMA could probably help us with that, our, um, our consultant for roads and streets and Public Works.
I got it.
Mr. President.
Ms. Nichols.
I did go over there this weekend to actually see those speed humps, and it's more so in the residential area. I've, I, I either. I either counted six or nine, I couldn't believe how many there were, so it's right in the thick residential area of Reading Road and Avondale.
Made you slow down, didn't it?
No, I wasn't driving.
Okay, I got a couple things here, one, we do need a Rita delegate, Ms. Zorb is currently the alternate, are you staying the alternate, Ms. Zorb?
Sure.
Need a volunteer to be the Rita delegate.
Mr. President.
Hmm, I think I heard Ms. DeWald first.
I volunteer to take that, that Rita designation.
So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. DeWald as the Rita delegate.
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Zorb, second by Ms. Underwood, to appoint Ms. DeWald to the, as our Rita delegate, any discussion? Mr. Hedger, please call the roll.
Ms. Duxtein.
Yes.
Ms. DeWald.
Should I recuse myself?
No, you don't have to.
Ms. Underwood.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Zorb.
Yes.
Ms. Blythe.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6-0.
Thank you. We also have the need for a city community development and recreation chairperson. Hearing no volunteers, I will be working to appoint someone at our next meeting. And the other one that I remember was the Tax and Cents of Review Council, where, Ms. Zorb, I believe you're the alternate for that?
Apparently, but that was really jogging my memory when she brought it up.
Mr. President.
I'll be quite honest.
This is the meeting that never meets, right?
Yes.
Ms. Duxtein.
I wanted to follow up this meeting with researching a little bit more what the commitment level looks like, and I'd be willing to consider it, but I know Ms. DeWald also said she would be willing to consider it, so, I don't, if she wants to, I don't know what it looks like, I need to make sure that I can commit if I can, I don't know.
Perhaps we can discuss that, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Ms. Zorb.
Perhaps we can discuss that in one of our council meetings, in one of the committee meetings? I don't know which one it's best suited for.
I mean, unless Ms. DeWald's just really itching to get going on this, you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Which committee meeting do you think is best suited?
Well, tax incentive is money.
But the other one sounded like.
Less rules, I don't know, Ms. Underwood.
Well, Mr. President.
I, I mean, I could see this going to rules and public policy on Monday.
That's why I said I don't want to put Ms. Underwood on the spot on more than smoke.
Oh, okay.
Budget and finance means I was gonna offer our time.
Let's do it, budget and finance on May. Okay. Thank you. Any other old business?
I thought we were on new. Were we on old?
No, I was still on old. It probably should have been new, but, all right, we're on new business now.
I have some new business, oh, Mr. President.
I am hesitating because, I apologize, I can't remember her last name, but I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Donna.
Brunner. Ms. Brunner.
Brunner. As a new councilperson to fill the seat that was left vacant by Ms. Anderson.
Mr. President.
So, I do, I need to, Mr. Dieters, if you can help me out, what's the, I mean, my understanding is the official process is nomination vote.
That is correct, Mr. President, just a majority vote of council based on the fact that there was nobody in that, that Ms. Anderson had named, no committee.
All right, can you state your motion again, please, Ms. Zorb?
I'd love to, thank you. I'd like to motion for Ms. Donna Brunner to fill the vacancy left behind on city council from the Marjorie Anderson seat.
Can you spell the last name, please?
I believe it's B-R-U-N-N-E-R, I'm looking for a confirmation.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion on the floor to nominate Ms. Donna Brunner to fill the vacant spot on council by Ms. Zorb, second by Ms. DeWald, discussion.
Mr. President.
I got Ms. Underwood first.
I'll defer to Ms. Duxtein.
Duxtein.
I thought there was, just in my confusion, I don't know, but aren't there supposed to be interviews conducted?
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWald.
I've never interviewed a person replacing another seat. I personally was interviewed the very first time I ran in 1990, because they didn't know me, but that was to run for an elected, I had to run on, on the campaign.
Mr. Dieters, could you provide input?
But we're replacing someone.
Yeah, there's no, there's no legal requirement, either under Ohio law and/or our charter, that there's interviews. Typically, when something like this happens, either there's just a motion and a second and a vote, or sometimes someone will make a motion for, they wish to follow a certain type of process. So, you can choose to interview, you can choose to accept resumes, or you can, a motion could carry and a vote could carry, it's.
Mr. President.
Discretion at council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Alexander.
I was interviewed. You do.
Oh.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were both placed here, you were not voted on by council. Mr. Dieters, can you explain the difference, please?
So, the charter has a provision that if you had a committee and you appointed a committee, then that committee would actually appoint and not council, so perhaps your interview happened through that committee and not through council. So, I represent a lot of public entities, so I've seen it happen, like, all different ways, but when it's a vote of the council or Board of Education, sometimes it'll just be, they'll identify, some of them just say, "Well, we'll go with the, the, the vote getter who got the second last votes," right, like in the last election, or sometimes they'll do elaborate interviews and resumes, and sometimes someone will make a motion, and it'll carry, and, and a majority vote will pass, so it's really completely within your discretion on how you'd go about doing it.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWald.
I wonder if these council members have someone else in mind? Is that, is that the issue?
No. Mr. President.
Ms. Alexander.
No, I didn't have anybody in mind, it's just, I just knew the process I went through, and I just thought, that's what you did.
No, and like they said, she did not have a committee written on her petitions, so that leaves it up to council to replace them, and I was above board and told you all, and I didn't hear any pushback then.
Mr. President.
Ms. Underwood.
Okay, and I did say something before, okay, so I'm not giving you pushback, but, you know, I just like for things to be fair, that's all, and I've met Ms., is it Brunner? I met her, I like her, I think she's nice, I just don't want to, you know, I want to avoid the appearance of impropriety, how about that?
Okay, Mr. President, and I'm.
Ms. DeWald.
I'm not trying to be pushy here, but I just want to let you know that those that were interviewed for their positions that just said that, the rest of council was not included on that because they had a committee, and then we show up, and then one day, here's a new face. I'm done, never mind.
All right, so, motion on the floor is nomination of Ms. Donna Brunner to fill the vacant spot on city council by Ms. Zorb, second by Ms. DeWald, call the roll, please.
Ms. Duxtein.
No.
Ms. DeWald.
Yes.
Ms. Underwood.
No.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Zorb.
Yes.
Ms. Blythe.
Yes.
Motion passed, 4-2.
So, I had yes for Ms. Alexander, yes for Ms. Zorb, yes for Ms. Blythe, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Um, Mr. President.
Ms. DeWald, or, Ms. Underwood.
Ms. DeWald was first.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna adjourn.
Let me give Ms. Underwood one last chance to tell us how she's not gonna offend us tonight.
Okay, I am gonna offend somebody on this one, I'm sure. So, the city of Cincinnati has been, like, aggressively going after Vine Brook and other companies like that because of the way that they fail to maintain their properties and just kind of other things that they're doing to just cause issues in the city, like, aggressively, like, they're almost over-aggressive, because they're going after other companies other than Vine Brook. Anytime, you know, there's a complaint, something they immediately file, you know, and I'm at the courthouse on a regular basis, so I kind of see that, and I kind of hear about it, and I'm just wondering if that's something, I guess this question is for Mr. Dieters, is that something that we can do, or are we just kind of stuck with, you know, what Vine Brook is doing?
I think there are things you can do, it's just a matter of whether or not you have the horsepower to go do it, right? Do you have, I mean, I don't know, the city of Cincinnati, I think, did some substantial investment in actually hiring some people, or moving people around to make that a priority for them, so I'd have to, I don't know enough about, exactly about what they did, but my experience in dealing with those types of situations, it requires you to be pretty, your perseverance has to be great, and you have to be on top of it.
Okay.
All the time, but there are, I think there are things that can be done, it may require some legislation, I think Cincinnati did pass some things to do that.
Okay, and, Mr. President.
Mr. Br, I'm sorry.
Ms. Underwood.
So, I just have one other question on new business, and Mr. Graver can see my notes, so. Poor face. So, I have this, I have a thought, and this question is for Mr. Dieters again, so, the people cutting through and speeding down Center Ridge seems to be like a huge problem, right? So, I know that, and I don't know the name of the street, because I'm not good with that, but when you get off of, you come down 75, and you go across 74, and then get off at the bottom of Colrain Avenue, and then turn right, right there, that street, I think that's Spring Grove, but don't quote me on that. There used to be a street that kind of flowed into Spring Grove, like a residential street, but then the city just kind of closed it off, they put a sidewalk there, so it's no longer a through street, it's kind of, it's closed off. So, can we do that with Center Ridge, can we just close that off right there, and just not make it a through street anymore?
Is Center Ridge, I'm not familiar with that street, is that one of ours?
Right, right across from Kroger.
Okay, is it, okay, it, I'd have to make sure it's a municipal road, but if it was, you theoretically could, although you would need to get the police involved, the fire department involved, probably talk to the residents, because there are pros and cons to shutting a street down, but theoretically, you could.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWald.
Ms. Underwood, are you speaking of right there at Hamilton and Center Ridge?
Right, so, like, if you're coming down Hamilton Avenue, instead of turn.
Then you can't come out.
Right, you, like, nobody's cutting through, because I think what's happening, people are just cutting through and speeding down Center Ridge to get around the traffic on Hamilton, I think that that's what's happening, I don't know, because I don't do that, but if we close it off so that there's a sidewalk there, like.
Center Ridge is the one that runs parallel with Galbraith?
Yes.
Yeah, I, what they're doing, I know when they do it, because getting out of my office when school gets out, forget it, you gotta wait, reminds me, you gotta leave 20 minutes before, 20 minutes after, I think what people do is, is when Galbraith is backed up during certain times of day, they jump on Center Ridge to avoid Galbraith.
Yeah, and, Mr. President.
Ms. DeWald.
The street that they blocked off, just north of that is Joseph, and they blocked that one off because of Cross County being built, it was too close for the, you know, you come right there, Cross County, so they closed that one off so that they could have that space to come off the highway. My concern is if you close off Center Ridge in that fashion, you're just forcing more flow of traffic on the other street, because you only have left then, you have Maryland, that comes through, and it would force them through onto Byzing, and Byzing is already a bottleneck, no matter which way you go on Byzing, so if we're forcing to Maryland, there's no light. I don't know, that seems like a, I don't know.
Just a suggestion, I'm just, just throwing it out there, not trying to, you know.
I understand.
I just think there's a lot of considerations you gotta take into when you do that, like, you know, because the safety services sometimes want alternate routes, too, if they need to get somewhere in the city, and Galbraith would be blocked, and they couldn't get to it, is there any other way to get to it, and then, so you gotta think about all those things, too.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Ms. Nichols.
I just wanted to, Ms. Underwood, your Vine Brook question, the CIC, we actually are looking into that, and one of the members has taken initiative to go to Cincinnati to see exactly what they're doing, we're in the collection stage right now, where we're collecting a different information to see what they did, and how they, and, so, it's being worked on at CIC.
Mr. President.
Ms. Zorb.
I'd like to make a motion, will you adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Zorb.
Mr. President.
Ms. Alexander.
I'd like to second it.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Zorb, second by Ms. Alexander, any discussion? Please call the roll, Mr. Hedger.
Ms. Duxtein.
Yes.
Ms. DeWald.
Yes.
Ms. Underwood.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Zorb.
Yes.
Ms. Blythe.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6-0.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you.